Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Burke County Board of Commissioners' Regular Meeting Tuesday, December the 20th, 2016. Appreciate you being here. All commissioners are present. County attorneys present, manager are accounted for. I would ask if you're making presentation tonight that you please come to the table, use the microphone, or come to the podium, use the microphone so that our clerk can get your voice as well. And also would ask you to silence your mobile devices at this time. So we'll consider our meeting adjourned. And we're very glad to have with us tonight Reverend Ron Cooper from El Bethel Baptist Church. Brother Ron is going to come and provide our invocation for us, and then we'll have pledge of allegiance provided by WA Young. We're glad to have Phil Smith and folks from WA Young here with us tonight. So let's all stand together, please. It's my privilege to lead you in prayer. Let's bow together in prayer. Oh, Father, we just want to come before you and thank you for being our God. What a privilege it is to come before the one true God and bring our request, and, Lord, lift up our praise, and just thank you for being our God. Lord, I want to confess the fact that I love this place. I love Morganton. I love Burke County. I just thank you, Lord, for the privilege to live in this area and how blessed we are. Lord, I thank you for the people here. I thank you for our leaders and, Lord, different ones that you've placed in leadership. Father, for each one of these county commissioners, Father, I pray, Lord, that you had blessed them, that you'd give them wisdom, that you'd give them spiritual insight. Father, I thank you for our mayor. I thank you for our sheriff. Lord, for each of our police that are, Lord, watching over us and protecting us. Father, we just ask, Lord, that you would in turn protect them. And, Father, we know also this is a dangerous time, and so, Father, we ask, Lord, that you would pour out special blessing. And, Lord, we just thank you for how you have protected us through the years and shown great grace. And truly, we ought to lift up praise to you. And, Father, I also want to thank you for the person of the Lord Jesus that we come at this time of the year, especially in focus on the fact that you so loved us, that you gave your one and only Son, the Lord Jesus, to come into this world and be born so that we could come to know you. And, Father, I thank you for the students at WA Young, those that are here tonight. I ask, Lord, a special blessing on all of our schools, Lord, that you would just continue to work. And, Father, for the businesses in this county, Father, we pray, Lord, every day that you would increase our businesses. And, Lord, that you just show great favor. And again, we look to you. We humble ourselves. We just want to thank you for every good thing that you're doing. What a great God you are. We ask this now in the wonderful name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ron. Boys and girls, come forward and lay this in our pledge, please.
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregby, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, boys and girls, we'll stay right there. We're going to come around and get a picture with you. Moms and dads, if you want to get a picture, get ready. That was a great shot. Okay, gentlemen, that'll bring us to the approval of meeting minutes. We have minutes before us tonight of April, approval of October 18th, '16. Board of Commissioners' Regular Meeting, November the 1st. Board of Commissioners' Pre-Agenda Meeting, November 15th, 2016. Board of Commissioners' Regular Meeting. You should have had those minutes in advance. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes as printed, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard the motion from Wayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. That'll move us to approval of tonight's agenda. Let me mention several items for you, gentlemen. We had two new items that came to your agenda. You've had those in advance. A consent item, number 11, for General Services Mercury Products Recycling Grant. Also, a decision item, number 2, Board of Elections Labor Overage for 2016 Presidential Election Poll Workers. And then one removal that we'll need to take off, item number 1, which was from HR, the IRS 1095-C negotiated contract that we discussed at pre-agenda. We were able to negotiate that contract with one of the responsive bidders that provided acceptable language, so we can remove that off of the decision, item number 1, and that will be handled under the budget as it initially began. So with those changes, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion we approve as changed, and those items being omitted as mentioned.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. All in favor of accepting that motion, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The all of us, thank you. All right. Tonight, we have presentations. First presentation will come from our Sheriff, Steve Wistnut. Sheriff, come and give us the recognition, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. I'd like to recognize one of our sergeants, Burke County Sheriff's Office Sergeant, Sergeant Scott Carrico, for completing the Criminal Investigation Certificate Program through the North Carolina Justice Academy. The Criminal Investigation Certificate Program is designed to recognize candidates who have completed appropriate training in order to better prepare themselves for the rigors and challenges of law enforcement criminal investigations. Investigative techniques, details of legal changes, technological advances, and the practical application of detectives' best practices constantly change in our challenging world. Completing the program required Sergeant Carrico to complete 500 credit hours of coursework within five years of starting the program, all while he was still working full-time as a criminal investigator and a criminal investigative supervisor for the Burke County Sheriff's Office. Only through his dedication and exemplary service was Sergeant Carrico able to complete his certification and join such a select group. Also, just a couple of things about Sergeant Carrico. He was on the cutting edge of the forensic telephone investigations that we're now doing really regionally. He started that program. He got us a grant, and we have been doing forensic telephone investigations for others in the surrounding area, and he has done an excellent job with that. He was also on the cutting edge of our online sexual predator investigations that we do. Now he supervises the officer that does that, and we've been recognized by the Attorney General's office in the Western District of North Carolina for the proactive work that the Sheriff's Office is doing. I asked him the other day, we're talking about CID, I think we have some of the best detectives in the Criminal Investigation Division throughout the state. And I asked him, I said, "I know you guys have really been doing a lot of work," and said, "How many search warrants and orders have you done?" And since October 1st, that division has completed 26 search warrants and court orders since October 1st. They are truly an outstanding group of people that are affecting the crime rate in a positive way by the work that they do. So it's a blessing to be able to be here. It's a blessing to hear those kids. The pastor that led in prayer, that's my pastor, I get to hear him, those heartfelt prayers and those sermons every week, and he's a man of God that truly thanks you for what you do, and that's what he said. But I'd like to bring Scott and his beautiful wife up here, and thank his mom and stepfathers here. If they'd come up, I'd like to read this certificate.
Mr. Chairman, point of personal privilege before the sheriff begins.
Yes.
I've had the privilege of knowing Scott for a number of years. Not a finer Christian man, not a more dedicated officer could you ever want to meet than Scott Carrico. It was a privilege for me to stand beside him and do training, and I don't know that if anybody really, well, the sheriff maybe, but some of the others don't realize how much this man has done for the county since he's been here. And Scott, I just wanted to give you my personal thank you for being a friend and helping me during my career, and I know you've got great things coming for you in the future.
And the certificate reads, "The State of North Carolina Department of Justice. The North Carolina Justice Academy issues this certificate thereby certifying that Timothy Scott Carrico has completed the Criminal Investigation Certificate Program this 7th day of October 2016."
Let me share.
Let us take a picture?
Yes, sir. Hang right there, and let's get a picture there.
Deppy's taking a picture, and I'm a little worried about how it'll turn out.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, I'd love to entertain a motion that we recognize Sergeant Carrico for his completion of Criminal Investigation Certificate Program.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you very much. Sergeant Carrico, again, we appreciate all the hard work you do and all the rest of your folks that work with you every day. Thank you. Okay, that moves us to item number 2, Presentation of Financial Data for the Period Ending September 30th, 2016, from Burke County Public Schools. We're glad to have Keith Lawson with us tonight. Keith, carry on.
Good evening, members of the Board, county officials. Again, congratulations to you re-elected members and newly-elected member. At this point, it being my third presentation of my own doing, I'll add, you all could probably make this presentation better than I, but I'll try to be brief with it since you've heard it a couple of times prior. What we have in the first slide is total funding for Burke County Public Schools as estimated at this point in time for the 2016-17 school year. The very far-left column is the total broken out by funding source, with our two primary sources being state funds, which provide approximately 73% of our overall school system budget, and then you all, the county, being our second-largest funding source, 14.5%. What I will say is that I've added to this in previous years, a previous column, which is in the middle, you'll see titled "previous," so hopefully the financial information's a little more meaningful, so you have something to compare to year over year. The current column, we have spent $22.5 million for this year. In the previous year, we had spent 21, or $24.1 million. The reason that the funding or fewer funds have been spent at the same point in time is schools started later this current year. You can see in the state funds, we're at 20.2%, where if all things were equal, you would see 25% spending. Again, another contributing factor is the fact that the first quarter and the last quarter of the school years, teachers are only, we only pay two months of payroll. So the first quarter and the last quarter are least spending quarters. Second quarter, you'll see those percentages rise to come more in line with what would certainly be anticipated. I'll also point out on the local spending, if you go to the far right, we're at 23.9%. So that's close to 25%. A couple of indicators that I like about that is spending in our local funds is pretty much flat quarter over quarter. So us being at 23.9% is a good indicator that hopefully we'll come in under budget and use less than anticipated fund balance for this year's budget. Our second slide has previous-year comparisons, and what this represents is specifically the funds that you all provide, Burke County Public Schools. If you go to the budget line, our budget for this year is 15, or to the budget column, rather, which is the fourth column from the left, our total budget's $15.7 million at this, for this school year. Through the first quarter, we've spent $3.7 million, which, again, going back to the previous slides, approximately 24% of our overall budget. I know that's very brief, but again, if you have any questions, I'll be certainly happy to entertain those, and I would like to, on behalf of Administration and the Board of Education, again, extend our gratitude and thanks for the additional funding for this current school year, which was $600,000. That's the most substantial funding increase that we've seen in many years, and it's much appreciated.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Any questions for Keith tonight?
Mr. Chairman, no question, but we certainly would like to send back to their board, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and a very prosperous next year with the schools.
Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas to you all and your families. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, thank you, Keith, again, for being here tonight and receiving that presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Now we come to scheduled public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing involving BDI, Economic Development Grant for Molded Fiberglass. That'll be presented by Alan Wood. Alan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Clerk, Mr. Attorney. Appreciate the opportunity. I know that y'all were probably hoping that it would be hope, as she did this at the pre-agenda as I was out of town, but you're stuck with me this evening, and for that, you have my condolences. I have with me Daniel Dill, who is the Controller for Molded Fiberglass. I appreciate him and being here with us, and I'll give him a chance in a moment just to make a couple of comments with your permission. Molded Fiberglass is adding additional space for new product line and bringing in new equipment. The total amount of the project is eight to eight-and-a-half million dollars, probably two-and-a-half million of capital improvements, and $6 million of new equipment. It has been a challenging year for molded fiberglass in the truck industry. I don't know how much of you, you follow that, but big truck sales are down substantially. And I think it is there to be commended to be looking at the future and adding equipment and plant to look at remaining competitive in the marketplace. And that's what we're talking about, is they're truly building for the future and to be stable. At the current time, they are at 180, give or take, employees. Their commitment is to remain at that level or above. This project will potentially add new jobs, but we're focused on the investment of this and for them to remain stable at the workforce that they have and to keep that level during the three years of the grant that we're proposing. The incentive is 50% of the new taxable investment that would be determined from the tax base, probably 2016-17 tax year, because this is a project would probably be complete within the next 12 months after that. So that would be the baseline. The incentive would be in paid on any new taxable investment that would occur for the next three years based on the growth of the company over that period. So once they pay the tax, they would, there would be a request submitted, and they would be reimbursed 50% of the new taxed investment on that property. Then, with your permission, I would ask Daniel if he'd like to make just a couple of comments and introduce one of his coworkers that's with him.
Again, I'm Daniel Dill, the Controller with Molded Fiberglass, and I also have with me our Health, Safety, and Environmental Manager, Jeremy McFalls. And on behalf of both of us and all of our teammates, we'd like to thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The other thing is, at your convenience, at some point, we would be happy to set up and take you on a tour of the facility. It's truly remarkable how much automation has occurred here and how much more will be taking place in the future. They are adding a new product line, and this will keep them competitive with their sister facility in Mexico. And so I think that's why this is such an important project for us, and we do appreciate them. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Alan. Gentlemen, any questions for Alan?
Mr. Chairman, just one, thanks too for coming to Burke County and giving us more jobs, but I think you may have covered it, but I just wanted to be reminded, they pay a higher salary range than the average salary in Burke County also, don't they?
That is correct.
Yeah. We appreciate that a great deal. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. With that, we'll close questions, and I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone in the audience tonight to speak to this matter? Seeing no one, then we will close the public hearing. And with that, gentlemen, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, to approve an economic development incentive of 50% of the new taxable investment of $8 million for three years and the creation of 20 new jobs over the same three-year period for molded fiberglass.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Abely. All in favor of that motion, signify with the uplifted hand, please. Madam Clerk, that's five to zero. All right. Thank you again, Alan and Daniel and Jeremy, for being here tonight. Appreciate it. At this time, we come to informal public comments. Madam Clerk, we have any speakers tonight? No speakers tonight. Okay. All right. That'll bring us to our consent agenda. I'll hear the county manager for that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, you have 15 items on your consent agenda. First is BOC, Adoption of Rules of Procedure for 2017. Number 2, BOC, the 2017 Commissioners' Appointments. Number 3, BOC, NCACC Legislative Goals Voting Delegate. Item 4, Clerk, Board of Health Reappointments. Item 5, Clerk, Resolution Establishing the BOC 2017 Meeting Schedule. Item 6, Clerk, Approval of County Management Records Retention Schedule Amendment. Item 7, Clerk, Appointments and Removal to the Council on Aging. Item 8, Clerk, Resolution Appointing Philip Luckadoo as Review Officer for the City of Morganton. Item 9, Clerk, Appointments to the Adult Care Home CAC. Item 10, Clerk, Appointment to Recreation Commission. Item 11, General Services Mercury Products Recycling Grant Approval. Item 12, Sheriff's Office Approval of Revised Records Retention Schedule. Item 13, Tax Department EMS Collections Report for October 2016. Item 14, Tax Department Tax Collection Report for November 2016. And Item 15, Tax Department Release Refund Report for November 2016.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, gentlemen, you've heard the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to accept it.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion we accept all 15 consent agenda items.
Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor of accepting that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. That brings us to item number 10, Items for Decision, as we approved in our earlier agenda. Item number 1 has been removed, so we'll move on to item number 2. Board of Elections Labor Overage for 2016 Presidential Election and Poll Workers will be presented by Debbie Mays, our Director.
I looked earlier today to make sure that the figures hadn't changed, and it looks like we're talking about the $9,994. That came solely because at the end of August, there was a court ruling that we would have to extend our early voting days, and my Board chose to do that from 8 to 5, which was the standard hours we were doing for the other days. They chose to do Monday through Friday, which was the minimum that we could have done. And that's where the $9,994 came in. That's for your chief judges and judges at One Stop. And that was an extra five days, nine-hour days, at five different sites. And that's where it came from. When I notified Roxanne at the Senior Citizens Center to let her know that we were going to need to reschedule and add five more days, I did not know what the costs were going to be, because at that time, they had not set the hours and had not told us what the hours had to be. I just knew it was going to be five more days. So I tried notifying. I just forwarded those emails to Brian, and I talked with Paul about it. We knew there were going to be more days, but I did not have a cost. This is unfortunate, I'm sorry, but it's what we had to do, and it was the minimum of what we had to do.
Okay. Thank you, Deb. Okay, gentlemen, you've heard this request. Any questions for Debbie on this matter? Hearing none, I'd be glad to entertain a motion for this.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to appropriate an amount of $12,506 to cover political work, labor, overage utilized in general fund, fund balance, as presented.
All right. Thank you, Maynard. You've heard Maynard's motion. All those in favor, please signify with the uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, that's five to zero. Thank you, Debbie.
Mr. Chairman, I did go one step further. I have talked with Paul a little bit about the subject. I think that he and I can work together with my Board and come up with part of that cost out of our current budget. I overshot a line item, thank goodness, so there, I know there's a couple thousand. So we can work with that. We can work together.
All right. Thank you, Debbie. I'm sure this Board has no objection to that.
Should we amend that motion?
I think the motion was up too, so we won't go any more than we have to.
All right. Okay, that brings us to item number 3, Clerk Appointment to Burke Development Incorporated. And we'll hear that from Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. We have three applications on file for seat number three on the BDI Board of Directors. That is an at-large seat. We have applications from Donna Roth, Colby Watts, and Jim Toner for your consideration.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Gentlemen, you've heard these applicants for this Board. I will open the floor for nominations, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint James Toner to the BDI Board of Directors to complete an unexpired term ending December 31st, 2018.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Donna Mr. Chairman, I nominate Donna Roth to the BDI Board of Directors to complete an unexpired term ending December 31, 2018.
All right, thank you, Maynard. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, again, I would like to state, we've got some good candidates, all of them doable, workable, and...
Yes, sir. Dearly noted, we are glad to have three good, good qualified candidates for this position. Hearing no other nominees, then, I will take a vote on these in the order that they were received. All those in favor of appointing James Toner to the BDI Board, please signify with an uplifted hand. That'd be three. And all those in favor of appointing Donna Roth to the BDI Board, please signify with an uplifted hand. That'll be two. So Madam Clerk, that appointment will go to Mr. James Toner. And again, thanks to all those applicants, and hope that you'll consider other boards and positions that we have throughout our county to be of service. All right, that will bring us, at this time, to reports and comments. And, gentlemen, I'll ask you just to go ahead and make comments and reports all at the same time, if you don't mind, and we'll start with our county attorney, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a report, but I did want to call the Board's attention to something that's happened in our community the end of November. Ralph Wilson, Coach Jug Wilson, who coached at Glen Alpine High and at Freedom High, and at the time of his retirement, had the fifth-most victories of any high school coach, any high school football coach in the nation, was named to the Hall of Fame for the North Carolina High School Athletics Association in their class of 2017. Coach Wilson died in 1999, and his widow, Anna Ruth Scott Wilson, will receive that award in April for him. And that's just, he's the first Burke Countyan to be honored in the Hall of Fame for what he's done solely in Burke County, and that is as a high school coach. And he was my high school football coach at Glen Alpine, so there's a special spot of tenderness there.
Thank you, JR. I also remember Coach Wilson. All right, Mr. Ablay?
The, I think everybody's got a copy of the airport minutes, either on their iPad or in their booklet, and also, on the tourism board, they had the biggest occupancy tax month in October that we've ever had in Burke County, which really shows well that people are coming to Burke County. So I was, I was really glad to hear that.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Taylor?
Parks and Recreation met for both the combined November-December meeting. Had our Christmas luncheon. Our county manager, Brian Steen, and Deputy County Manager, Paul Imes, joined us in that meeting. Very little business took on, was taken by that meeting, so, but we did have our Christmas dinner meeting. Mental Health did not have, canceled their December meeting for Christmas, but we did have a, our Uniform Quality Air and Water meeting. There was a lot went on at that meeting. Western Piedmont Council of Government is no longer just a four-county government entity, and they changed the name. And I emailed that to Kay, and Kay forwarded that to all of you, but there's a lot of information in there, and I hope you will take time to read it. And as far as personal comments, would like to wish you and all and your family a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and most of all, a safe, healthy, and prosperous 2017. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. County Manager?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, we have some updated photographs of the Eastburg-Hildebrand Library Senior Center for your viewing. Some of the steel is up, and they are beginning to put the roof trusses up. Train truck was there Monday and started to work and had a problem, so they had to come back, I think, yes, today. And so these are pictures as of this morning, they were putting trusses up. That's, that'll be the back porch that you're looking at there. Moving along.
All right, thank you, Brian. That's another good, good project coming along, and we appreciate all efforts there. Mr. Carson?
My library report is in, in the packet, and I have no other comments.
All right. Scott?
Well, being so new, I've yet to go to a board meeting, so nothing to report at this point, but I do want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and I'm excited what's coming up in 2017.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, any comments from you?
Just wanted to wish you all a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
All right, thank you.
Well, I'll report on the DSS Board. We did meet this month. Just a few notes, met December the 12th. At that time, we had 209 children in foster care in Burke County. That number continues to be high. And again, with just a note to those in the audience, whether you be here or seeing this on YouTube or whatever way you might be looking at it, if you have a heart for, for children and foster care, I would encourage you to give consideration to that. Our folks at DSS would love to, to help you get connected if you can help and would like to help with children who need foster care in our area. The need is great. Department still has about $84,000 in crisis funding available. That's typically for winter needs for families. And then also, we still have about $312,000 in low-income energy assistance money's available. That money is aimed initially at seniors, but will be opened a little bit later beyond that. So if you have a need for energy assistance in the winter months, I would encourage you to contact DSS and see if you might be eligible for that. Then on just personal notes, I would wish all of the Board a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and as well as all the citizens of Burke County, a wonderful Christmas and Happy New Year. I would like to thank also, at this time, our Clerk for all that she does for us, making our room more attractive over the holidays, nice and festive. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome. If anybody wants to help take it down in January, let me know.
She's always on top of it, isn't she? Okay. At this time, we'll hear, I did want to ask the Board if there, anyone has any proposed dates for hearing our Animal Control Ordinance Workshop. We've mentioned that. Would like to, to schedule a workshop on that. Anybody have a proposed dates that you might, in particular, be interested in?
How long, Mr. Chairman? Are you two-hour meeting, three?
I'm thinking something in that category, probably two hours.
I'm, I'm, just know I'm more flexible in February than I am January. I can maybe make January work, depending on the day, but February's a lot more open.
What about following our February pre-agenda, maybe at four o'clock? That might, you know, mean we'd meet from three to six that day or something, but is that, would that be?
Doable.
Doable with everyone?
Sure.
Brian, does that seem okay?
February 7.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'll kind of pin that date in for us and send, send us a note, that'll be good. We'll plan on getting that workshop together and give our folks time to hear what our proposed ordinance is, and then also come in on other ideas that other groups and organizations have brought forward to us as well. So we look forward to working through that at that time. All right, Madam Clerk, we'll hear vacancies at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. We have the following opportunities for citizens to be involved. We have the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. I would bring to your attention that we made four appointments tonight, so we're making good progress on filling some vacant seats on that Board, but we still need more. The Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, the Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, the City of Morganton Board of Adjustment and Planning Board for the ETJ, the Voluntary Agriculture Board, Burke County Board of Adjustment and Planning Board, Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission, the Western Piedmont Regional Trans-Authority Transportation Advisory Board, Partners Behavioral Health Management, and the Morganton Burke Senior Center Advisory Committee.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. And again, I would encourage you, if you have interest and time in any of these Boards or Commissions, would like to give, give some time to these areas, please consider contacting the Board, the Clerk. She has application. We'd be glad to receive those for anyone who would be willing to help. All right, tonight, we do not have a need for closed session. So with that, gentlemen, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I think no one's opposed to that. Thank you very much. Wish you all a Merry Christmas, and thank you for being here.